Alrighty. So, where we go? Going to the Pedco meeting. I mean, to the city council meeting. This won't be the Pedco meeting. Anyway. Yeah, let's see, I'm gonna put my hoodie over my ears. I think. Just 'cause. There we go. Alrighty. Oh, I like that. I can actually. I can hear better. Okay, 894. And we're going to City Hall. Okay. Away we go. It's pretty chilly, but not too bad. Okay, so I'm going down there to address some of the. Ending Pedco. Why in the steel mill. And more than that, saving. Ending the war, saving the world. Doing something heroic. Something home of heroes. Type stuff. Let's see. I think that this is now the time of heroes. That's my thinking. So if you're a hero, or if you. Intentions of being a hero. Now is your time. To get with it. Can you hear me there? Boy, this is. Very deep snow here. Three-wheel drive, that's what I'm talking about. Man, it makes for a better workout, too. To get that three-wheel drive, you gotta. Gotta push, push on them pedals. Uh-oh. What happened here? I don't know what happened there, but it rebooted. Oh boy, hope that's not a issue. I left the battery on overnight again, so I had to leave it on the charger. The oldest battery is the one I always use. Anyway. I had to put a fresh battery into service here. For this trip. Hope no problems, hopefully. So. I'm just gonna go in with the faith. And I'm gonna read my statement, I guess. Make my accusations. In a statement. Then I'm gonna ask them, I guess, you know, the final thing really is. Is it true? That nobody on this council? Nobody in this room? Nobody in this hall? Nobody in this city? Cares? That the steel mill? The Pedco may be stealing the steel mill? From the Russians? And willing to start World War III? A war in which they? I doubt. We're going fight? For themselves. Of course, they'll send our, us and our children? To die. Murder and die. I contend they're a bunch of cowards. Scallywags. Lying, cheating, double dealing. Thieving. Scallywags. Traitors, cowards. They want, they, they want war. But they're not willing to fight war. They just wanna make money. And if the whole world goes to hell, they don't really care. It's like the definition of evil. I think somebody did define that as evil. I was just reading on Facebook. The way that I feeds me stuff you wouldn't believe all the time. Hopefully. I'll get down there in time. I didn't lock up the chickens, damn it. I hope I don't lose no chickens over this. Damn raccoons. I'll just try and get home as quick as I can, I guess. I hope I got some gum or something for my breath. I'm gonna think I brushed my teeth. Shit. My head hurts. Okay. Oh God, please be with me. Oh God. Please prepare their hearts for me. Please, God. Help me. Please, God. Let me know what to say. And to give you any glory and to. And to be what you. What would be pleasing to you, God. Please. Guide me. To your will. Oh God. God, please bless and keep us all. I still got it on the intermediate. Gear. I gotta get a gear down. Intermediate four. Let's go down to intermediate three. Intermediate, intermediate. This is medium, medium. So. That's a good gear to be in. It's like if it was a single speed, that's probably the. The gear it would be, I guess. Multipurpose. I'm still pedaling my ass off. Legs are getting pumped up good. That's. Kind of a trip for me. I usually. Don't work that hard. Oh God, be with me, please. Help me. Your will be done, God. Your will be done. Trying to keep me from making a fool out of myself. Too bad. Please, God. Man, this is rough going here, I'm telling you. Oh, boy. I'm glad I left early. It's gonna take quite a bit longer than I thought. To get down there. I'm gonna be beat to hell. By the time I get down there, we're in a fight. Both gonna be. Beat up pretty good. My goodness. Oh goodness. Oh boy. Oh, that's nice and smooth. Oh boy. Okay, let's go. Oh God, please protect my chickens. Oh my goodness. Shaking my bones. Oh, she's great work though. Oh boy.
To the last breath.
Oh goodness. Fifty-fifty shot, I took the. I just wanted to express my shit and. My. Well, I'm glad I got that bad gift out of the ways. Everybody's gotta. Make one mistake a day. That's the kind of thing you don't wanna get behind, don't you? It'll build up on you. Catch up with you real quick. God, please bless and keep us all. Make a day of mistake and get it over with. Sign up to do it again. There you go. Secret of good life. I mean, I didn't mess around. I took a bad little bit. There's a bridge down there, way in the hell down there. Quarter mile at least. Gear down. Down in gear two.
We now move into public forum. There are six people signed up. We'll start with Charlie Fettie. Hello, Mr. Fettie. Thank you for coming.
Can you turn your mic on? Hello, okay. I, 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 I'm trying to read this statement as quickly as I can. It's regarding Pedco and the steel mill. And, uh, and I'd like to ask a couple of quick questions at the end, if you can give me just a little bit of your time. Pueblo. Does it matter if our steel mill is being stolen from Russia and from our people? And then? Our steel mill is being given to the Nazi in Ukraine in order to support the Nazi torture, murder, and terrorizing of Russian Christian civilians? I greatly suspect that Pedco is stealing the steel mill and/or acting as an agent on behalf of another corporation or institution or state? In order to steal the steel mill from the Russians? I suspect that they are more than willing to start World War III in order to steal our steel mill. From those who were very kind and good and generous to us. Us all in our city and our state and our nation. And Pedco is more than willing to send our people into murder and death and not themselves or their loved ones. I contend that they are lying, cheating, stealing cowards, scallywags, traitors. Before Pedco, Pueblo was the steel city, not the slave city. Pedco creates jobs by enticing businesses to come to Pueblo. What do they use to entice these owners? They offer our good, cheap, slave labor. And a tax base that pays all the bills for the owners. Pedco are nothing more than slave traders, and we and our children are the product. This Monday, I intend to be heard, and I will not be silent until I know. Am I the only one who thinks that this stealing the steel mill from Russia thing and starting World War III is horrifyingly wrong? And we should immediately stop it and begin repairing the damage done? Immediately, end Pedco. Use the money to buy the steel mill. It is more, thank you, it is more than enough. Stop the war, save the world, buy the future for our children. Own ourselves. We don't need owners. We pay all the bills, we do all the work, we already own that steel mill. Hundred and fifty years of blood, sweat, and tears are our earnest payment. We are the home of heroes. We are the steel city. We are not the slave city, or the fireman city, or the police city, or the jail city, or the insurance city, or the data center city. We are best when we know well who we are and what we have to offer the world. We are God blessed to have a steel mill. It is our primary employer, as it should be. There are plenty of other support businesses to be built and maintained in order to support the steel mill and the steel mill employees. Pueblo, we are much better off as the steel city than we are as a slave city. Admit it. Pedco is and was a mistake. Spread the word. The mountain is moving. And I just wanna ask, do you know? Who owns the steel mill? And is Pedco trying to steal the steel mill from the Russians? On behalf of themselves or some other corporation or state? And starting World War III? Do you know? Do you care?
Is that already done? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Anybody in this room care? Does anybody in this room care if that's what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Fettie. Elvis Martinez.
Clear it out. I got it all plowed. Hold on this side. That cracks me up. I get all that. I'll get the sidewalk, I'm proud of notes. I'm gonna go around on the street. That's what I'm doing. Guess I gotta go down to Union's, let that do the, yeah. Okay. We're up now. Be on easy street now. There we go. Yeah. Now I'll make a little time here. I guess God has it all figured out. Whatever's gonna happen, is gonna happen. Oh no. Let me see if they can. Drum me out of the place. Heretic. Stun him. I don't know. Oh my goodness. Oh, there's only one way. That's the hard way. That's what I say. That's what I do to her. There's no way but the hard way. No matter if it's going good or bad. We better be on the hard way. Hard way, hard way. Of hard men. Her hardness has only one way. The hard way. The hard way. I see, the hard way. Okay. So for what it's worth. Tires are all good. Rims are straight. The super, super track rims are holding up good. Twenty-six inches. I know it's gonna be a little harder on the drive line and stuff, I got geared down on this hill, yes. Okay. And I'm in immediate, so should be able to make it. Please God, help us. Push it, push it. Push it, push it. Push it, push it. Push it. Push it, push it. Push it, push it. Push it. Up here. Push up here. Okay. I awake again. Same as every day. Every day. There's my. Still on the way. Another day. Another day. Okay. Maybe I'm gonna. I think. I probably don't expect. All I could do. Tried my best. It was not enough. And now I felt bad. But then I tried. For it's too late. So have I. For now I should. I gotta remember their names. Sean. Dennis. You're the one. So strong. Why did I go? If I'm bad, I'm bad. I do. If I'm bad, I'm bad. For now. Yes. Mark. Okay. Sure. Does it go away? Here's my. Still I try. My heart grows. I'm a woman again. Oh goodness gracious, gracious. Eons of years. Mornings of morning. Wet hills of tears. Moves on me. When the stages are set. People come and go. I increase my best. Oh. For reasons most common see. They were my story. But not from me. Then and for second. While people I love. Hate my music, lose my heart. Hate my. Hey buddy. Okay. Oh, you too. Brother and sister. Okay, hold on. Oh yeah. I fall again. It's for the day. Back to sleep. Where's all those nights? Everything becomes nothing. Nothing becomes anything. Anything becomes something. Forever more again. Harry. Okay. How about you? There we go. Lock, roll. Okay.
So there you go.
Think I was Sandra Sue.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, man. I don't know. Boy come down here to. Out or something. Everybody's good. Something a little bit too strong. Okay. Oh, that was rough, I'll kiss you. Eight ninety-nine. Okay, we're at City Hall. I made my statement. I'm still kind of upset because as usual, they ignored me and I don't exist. Nobody gives a shit. Terrible. Oh goodness. It'll be. Four or three by a bunch of scallywags. Scallywags! Well, I made my statement, I guess it could have been better, could have been worse. They just ignored me, as usual. Charlie, hope you get, God bless you. That's a new song we're working on in our new studio. What do you think? Let us know in the comments down below.